All right. Good morning, everyone. I'm Councilwoman Felicia Porter, representing the 10th District and Chairperson for the Public Health and Environment Committee. Just a reminder, please turn off or mute your cellphones. And joining us today, we have committee members, Mark Conway from the 4th District, Vice Chair. We also have Councilman James Torrance from the 7th District. We have several representatives from the Mayor's Office and the Council President's Office. Thank you so much for joining. And then we also are staffed by the committee staff person, Marguerite Kern. On today's agenda, we're talking about Council Resolution 25-0016R for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Health Department, Office of Equity and Civil Rights, the Mayor's Office of Children and Families and other relevant parties to appear before the City Council to provide insight on the perinatal and reproductive health care needs of the Black community of Baltimore and to discuss strategies to support access to effective prenatal and reproductive health care for parents. As the sponsor of this bill, I'll provide opening remarks. The Black maternal health agenda of Baltimore City outlines a comprehensive strategy to address systemic disparities in maternal care, particularly affecting Black communities. This agenda encompasses five key legislative initiatives designed to improve maternal health outcomes through community engagement, integrated services, provider accountability, data transparency, and support for social determinants of health. Next, we will go with agency reports, Department of Health. You all had a favorable recommendation for this bill. Office of Civil Rights.
Thank you, Chairman Porter. Zachary Wallman, Officer at Civil Rights, we are favorable towards this bill. Thank you.
And then the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success.
Favorable, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And so now we'll go into presentations. I want to elevate Dr. Kanika Harris, a leading expert in this field, to provide some information and a presentation on the doula training that we're going to be showcasing today. Dr. Harris, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, ma'am, we can hear you now.
Okay, great. My apologies. Trying to figure out the mute. Good afternoon, everyone. I am honored to be here and to be able to present. Thank you for inviting me. I am with the National Association to Advance Black Birth. I am the Executive Director. We are a national organization that works to advance the Black birthing outcomes of Black birthing people in the United States. We do this through advocacy, training, and supporting doula and midwifery care. And for some reason, oh, okay, sorry. I think you guys can see that. And we influence policy change to ensure culturally responsive care and maternity services along the life course. So it is important to understand, as we're addressing this issue, that maternal health begins where a mother is born. It does not begin at her first prenatal visit. It begins as she is in the community. So where are we right now? We know that Black women in the United States experience maternal mortality two to four times the rate of white women. Sometimes that is higher in other states that can be 11 to 12 times higher. Addressing preconception health has been a priority for HHS. It's also been a priority in the White House blueprint. Midwifery and doula care models are recognized as life-saving strategies to reduce mortality and postpartum complications. And we know that we can do this through an improved health care workforce that has, that for savings, we know that we can save 1.6 billion as a country if we invested more in providing Medicaid coverage for doulas and midwives. So why HBCU and colleges? We started a pilot back in 2022 at Morgan State University to look at investing in colleges, one, addressing preconception health, that's so important, but then also looking at them as a vital option for increasing the birth worker, diversifying and increasing birth workers that are still needed in the Baltimore community. So we know that HBCUs produce 20% of all undergraduate degrees. We have seen that as a liberatory space to foster success for the needs of people of color. And right now, none of our HBCUs, we have some that are starting midwifery programs, but at this point, we have no schools of public health and no midwifery programs to really engage them in a way to be in the workforce. Nurish was that answer that we wanted to pilot at Morgan State University. Our approach was really working to decolonize information and making sure that young women weren't showing up pregnant in the hospital, not having information about their reproductive health. But again, they could also learn about midwifery care, doula care, and be in the communities in Baltimore. We did this through mentorship, through teaching them preconception health. They also got personal care and coaching through OB-GYNs that weren't initially available to them in their communities as well, so that they knew how to show up healthy pregnant. This is just a quick look at the curriculum. We did preconception health, pregnancy, child first, educating for mothers, advocating for mothers and babies, postpartum support, miscarriage and infant loss, mental health first aid, supporting LGBTQ plus families, infant and childcare, and also the business of birth work. And so what I can say, this is just some evidence of what the training looked like. We really worked on in-person technical skills to make sure that they were confident working in the Baltimore communities. We had a very high success rate out of 38 graduates, out of 40 trained doulas, 38 graduated successfully. Some of them are even going into midwifery care. And we had an 88% retention rate. We followed them in terms of their underlying health conditions. And we saw a decrease in hypertension and diabetes amongst our cohort, which also are some of the leading causes we see when it comes to pregnancy complications. We had zero maternal and infant deaths and a 98% client satisfaction rate among the families they served in the community. So overall, we, they served over 200 families in the Baltimore community. They were Medicaid reimbursement ready. We worked with an organization that worked with them to take care of Medicaid reimbursement issues and so that they could be set up and work in the community. We're hoping to do this again and reach over 1,500 families in the Baltimore community. And what we're seeing is a continuity of care. We're seeing a change in culture. We're seeing the fact that we can provide capacity for the community-based organizations in Baltimore that are working, that need this type of capacity. And hopefully preventing, addressing preventable deaths through making sure that we support these students in knowing how to take care of their health and knowing what their needs are as well. So I will stop there. I only have a short amount of time for any questions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Harris. So colleagues, I just want to just to ground us. Dr. Harris is, one, because of her professional expertise, but also the leading, you know, the leading experience that we have here for a lot of this birth work that's happening in the city of Baltimore is happening, you know, within our Black communities. And so Dr. Harris is just one of a few organizations that we've worked with, the Bloom Baltimore today, that we are really fighting the systemic issue. And my hope is that when we have these groups, we can support them not only through our Health Department, but through also through other philanthropic opportunities and also influences within your district. And so, for example, we're speaking with Coppin State University about partnering with Morgan State University about that doula certification program. We're working with, in your district, Councilman Conway, with the Bloom Collective to see like how we can get that York Road corridor, that McCabe communities in order, you know, get them in a space where we have mothers that feel supported during their pregnancy as well. So I'll stop there, colleagues, to see if you have any questions for Dr. Harris before we go to the Health Department. All right, thank you so much, Dr. Harris. I sincerely appreciate you and have good luck today. Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you. All right, now we'll turn it over to the Health Department.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Julia Roche, Legislative Affairs Director at the Baltimore City Health Department. And I am just-
And I'm sorry, Julia, if you could come closer to the mic.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Julia Roche, Legislative Affairs Director with the Baltimore City Health Department. Thank you so much, Madam Chair, for calling this hearing. We are very excited to present about our work. And some of our partners are in the room too, and just want to say thanks to everybody. And let me just figure out how to share my screen. All right. And I will pass to my colleague, Jana, to introduce herself and kick us off.
Thank you, Julia. Good morning, everybody. Thanks for having us here. My name is Jana Goins. I'm an epidemiologist at the Bureau of Maternal and Child Health at the Baltimore City Health Department. And today, I'm going to kick us off with some data to help provide some important context around Black maternal health in Baltimore City. So according to the 2020 U.S. Census, there are about 585,000 residents in Baltimore City. About 1 in 7 residents are Black women of reproductive age, which is about 84,000 residents. And about 5% of Black women gave birth in the last 12 months. That's around 3,700 births. On average, right now, we see about a little over 7,000 births in the city, so that ends up making up about 55% of all births in the city annually. Next slide. Okay, so I'm going to talk about some important factors that influence maternal health across the life course. So that includes before, during, and after pregnancy. Hypertension is an important factor. 1 in 6 Baltimore City female residents of reproductive age have been diagnosed with hypertension. And it's well documented that Black women have higher rates of hypertension compared to other racial and ethnic groups in the U.S., and that's true for Baltimore City as well. Hypertension is really important for the Bureau of Maternal and Child Health because it not only impacts the health of the adult, it also impacts the health of the infant as it's a leading cause of preterm birth. It's also important to talk about social determinants of health here, particularly when we think about the role of structural racism in influencing maternal mental health, chronic stress, and how that can influence birth outcomes as well. In Baltimore City, 1 in 5 Black female residents feel they have been, they are treated worse than other races during their health care visits. Almost a quarter of the female population has reported feelings of isolation in the last 12 months in Baltimore City. And almost a third of female residents reported that they were unable to pay their bills in the last 12 months. Next slide. So unfortunately, we can't talk about maternal health without talking about maternal death on the other end of the spectrum. In 2022, Baltimore City had the highest number of maternal deaths in all of Maryland, out of all the counties, despite the fact that there are four other counties with larger population. So that means that Baltimore City essentially made up a quarter of the state's maternal deaths. It's also important to note that in 2020, Maryland's pregnancy-associated mortality rate almost doubled from 44 to 84. And the pregnancy-associated mortality rate is not only influenced by issues that happen during pregnancy at birth, but it also includes unexpected causes of death like accidents, homicide, and overdose. And in this case, this increase was due to a change in, a large increase in the number of overdose deaths in the state. Next slide. So this, we see this trend in Baltimore City as well, where the leading causes of maternal mortality remain largely preventable and include unintentional overdose and homicide. And it's important to note that overdose is the leading cause of maternal mortality for both Black and white residents in Baltimore City. However, Black residents bear the largest burden of disease here. And from 2001 to 2020, the Black maternal mortality rate increased by 44%. We also see in preliminary data additional increases in the Black maternal mortality rate through 2022. This means that in Baltimore City, Black birthing people experience a risk of death 2.5 times higher than white birthing people in Baltimore City. And this racial inequity looks to substantially widen through 2022 as well. Next slide. Okay, so I'll just pause here, just to say that, like, looking at this data, we can see that we have some big challenges ahead of us. But we are up for the challenge, as this is the work that we are clearly proud to do. So I'm going to pass it over to Daphne Hicks, and she can talk about the work that we're doing in the city around maternal health.
All right, thanks, Jana. Good morning, Madam Chair, Honorable Members and colleagues. I'm Daphne Hicks. I'm the Director of Administration for the Bureau of Maternal and Child Health. And I, as Jana said, very proud of the work that we do, and we are very proud to have this opportunity to share our work with you today. So BHB, which is Be More for Healthy Babies, it's very important to note that it is not a program. Many individuals think it's a program, but it's an initiative. It's Be More for Healthy Babies, and it's a long-term collective impact strategy. And this initiative is led by three organizations, Baltimore City Health Department, Family League, and now HCAM, which is our centralized intake unit. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. In addition to the three lead agencies, we have over 150 partners in Baltimore City that help us with this work. And I will point out, the last point here, we do apologize, that is a typo. So parts of our strategy are not led, are led by partners and not the Baltimore City Health Department. So we have many, many partners that help us with this work that are not necessarily Baltimore City Health Department employees. So when we look at the BHB management strategies, there are many components to our strategy. So we have our Community Advisory Board, which consists of residents and some staff. And the Advisory Board became part of BHB's structure in 2017 as a way to ensure that BHB is accountable to those that we serve in Baltimore City, of course. And within the structure, there are various components that we have that, again, help us to ensure accountability. So we have our core implementation team, which consists of many of our partners, and they bring many expertise to the group. We have our coalitions that are listed on the right-hand side. I'm not going to read them to you. You can see the slides. And then we have a steering committee, which is made of, made up of Mayor Yoel, Cabinet, heads of public agencies. And they bring sustainability and expertise to Be More for Healthy Babies. Next slide. So when we talk about the various components of BHB, we have our centralized intake unit, and I'll talk a little bit more about these in the upcoming slides. We have home visiting programs, many of them in Baltimore City. We have family plan and reproductive health, including our youth-focused services. We have the WIC program, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with, Women, Infants, and Children. Extensive outreach to, to and collaboration with medical providers. And then we have our community, BHB community sites, which are three in Baltimore City at this time. And so looking at the pieces of the puzzle or the management structure, next slide. Okay, our centralized intake unit, this is one of the most important components of our program or of the strategy, I'll say, of the initiative. And with HCAM, it is our centralized intake unit, and the work that they do is critical because what they do is they connect our people to various resources and services in Baltimore City. Providers in Baltimore City complete a pre-risk assessment or a postpartum infant and maternal referral form. And then from those forms that are completed, those individuals are referred out to the various programs in Baltimore City, be it our home visiting programs, or the WIC program, or our Baltimore Infants and Toddlers program, immunization, and many, many other programs that are in Baltimore City that serve our pregnant women, infants, and children. And so what is very important to note is that the data does show that pregnant people who receive care coordination from HCAM have infants who are 80% more likely to reach their first birthday. And that is something that we're very, very proud of. So within our centralized intake unit, again, there's referrals that go on in our intake service. The prenatal risk assessment is filled out by most of our health care. We have community organizations that do referrals to HCAM. And then individuals can refer themselves to the centralized intake unit. And what, again, what they do, I've already spoke on this, they provide referrals to home visiting programs, various groups that we have, prenatal education. We have clubs for moms, where they can go and get various support and support each other. Baltimore Infants and Toddlers. We have mental health and substance use services that we provide to our pregnant women from preterm up until the time that the baby is five. And then we also have adolescent reproductive health services. And as Jana spoke earlier, there are various social determinants that are a factor in this. And then we do a lot of work with our health care providers, or our providers in Baltimore City, helping our residents to navigate through health benefits and looking at primary care and specialty care that is needed by our residents. Okay, so the strengths of coordination, we conduct extensive outreach and education to many of our obstetric providers and clinics and birthing hospitals. And we're working with various, closely with various providers and birthing hospitals in Baltimore City. So we created this PRA or this risk assessment used in 70% of our provider offices, including major hospital systems. And then we also collaborated with Baltimore and Anaronda County to pilot the E-PRA, which has been picked up by MDH as a statewide initiative now. So this is now statewide. And then we've achieved 80% PRA completion in Baltimore City compared to 30% state average. So just another thing that we're very proud of. And then we have increased our PMER completion by 45%, and we're looking to increase that even further. And so when we talk about home visiting, we have various home visiting programs in Baltimore City. Within Baltimore City Health Department, we have the Nurse Family Partnership, where we have bachelor-level nurses that go out into the homes and serve our most vulnerable population, 13 to 26, who are first-time pregnant ladies, who are 28 weeks less pregnant, 20 weeks or less pregnant. And they actually work with our moms from the time they're pregnant through the time that the child is two years old. And then we have various other programs, home visiting programs, that is run by one of our partners, the Family League. And I'm very proud of these services. And with these services, many of our parents are referred to other programs. They receive advocacy services. And our home visitors are very, very passionate about the work that they do with our moms and their babies. And so now we talk about maternal mortality review team. So in 2019, the Health Department and City Administration worked on legislative to allow Maryland local health departments to convene local maternal mortality review teams to address the crisis of maternal mortality. And in 2021, Baltimore City launched its local MMR team, the first and only MMR team in the state. Another proud moment. And so the MMR team reviews cases of maternal mortality to understand factors that play a role in the cases. And then they also make recommendations to prevent similar situations in the future. So we have a team of experts that sit on that committee. And those experts include health care providers, residents, city agencies, and other individuals that support us with that team. And so, as I just stated, our maternity, maternity review recommendations need changes at a systems level. This is not work that we can do alone. We really need our partners to hone and then help us to manage and oversee these recommendations that are made by the group. So additional follow-up with our high-risk mothers, expanded diet care, increased access to doula services, and then increased MCO, follow-up on missed appointments and prescriptions.
Ms. Hicks, real quick, before you go further, diets, diet care. So I know what diet care is before the rest of the members. Can you explain what diet care is?
Yes, so basically, it's bringing, making sure that we follow up on appointments for mom and their babies, sort of, and at the same time, making sure that we can get both of them to, we follow up on care. Did you want to say anything?
Yes.
Okay. So I am going to defer to Ashley to talk about reproductive health services, family plan and reproductive health. Ashley?
Thank you, Ms. Daphne.
Good morning to everyone, people in the audience.
Madam Chair, thank you for having me. And council members, thank you. All right, so for the family plan and reproductive health services portion of the BHB family, we aim to reduce unintended pregnancies and improve pregnancy outcomes by providing reproductive health, healthcare services to people of any age and of any gender, basically people from ages 11 to 50 years old. So some key services that we provide to our clients who seek our services are pregnancy testing and referrals, breast exams, pap smear testing, STI or STD screenings and treatment, HIV testing and counseling. Also, a vital piece is mental health. We talk about that with our clients as well. And a larger piece is going out into the community and providing those services across Baltimore City in all four corridors, which is health education and outreach, as well as tabling. Next slide, please. All right, so youth-focused family planning and reproductive health services and initiatives. So BHB has a youth sexual health strategy, or as we call it, and some people who are 80s babies, they may know of Yoshi. So we call it the Yoshi Strategy, right? Some of y'all know. And so Yoshi, it uses a reproductive justice lens. And so what that looks like is we provide equal services or equitable services across the board to people, no matter their age, their identification, or their race, and I mean, gender identification. And so with that being said, we provide educational, like I said, equitable access to contraception and sexual health education for young people and the people who parent or support young people. That's a big part of it, too. The next piece of that is the strategy includes a Youth Advisory Council, as we call it, the YAC, who provide vital insight for the strategies that we have. And also, they support with our tabling, outreach, or community asset mapping efforts across the city of Baltimore, especially right now in the Cherry Hill area, where we need extra support. So our young people and members of our Y search team have pushed in to provide that support to people in the Cherry Hill corridor. And then also, we have the You Choose Initiative. You Choose has been around for a few years, and basically, it is a youth-friendly, evidence-based sexual health education and services program that we've had. We are in, now in the third cohort of that program. The program is implemented in classroom, clinic, and community settings. Next slide, please, Julia. Thank you. And as I mentioned earlier, our Youth Advisory Council. So just to give you a little more information about the Youth Advisory Council, our Youth Advisory Council started in 2010, and it was a place for our young people across Baltimore City from all backgrounds to come and provide support around campaigns that we had at the Baltimore City Health Department and the Maternal and Child Health Bureau. Also, our young people, they meet twice a month. They provide insight to inform more about BCHD's programming as well, not just maternal and child health. We help in other bureaus in our agency as well. We also have young people who are peer educators, so they can advocate and speak to people their own ages, and then also speak to adults about the importance of them having that information about a positive reproductive health education that eliminates some of the stigma about choices that they may want to make for themselves or their friends. And also, they engage with one another, and they talk to other groups to talk about the promotion- promotion of health across Baltimore City for all young people. So at the Baltimore City Health Department, we also have another team called the Office of Youth and Trauma Services. They have a YAB, a Youth Advisory Board, and the YAC, Youth Advisory Committee. And the YAB, they connect with one another. And what they do on Friday, actually, they will be meeting with some Baltimore City Public Schools teachers to discuss how, what they feel like they need as young people and how when they interact with teachers at school, how it makes them feel, what can they do to better support the young people in this space. And the teachers are open to those conversations because those are the young people who are sitting in some of those classrooms. So that's the benefit of our youth advisory council that is housed within the BHB programming. Thank you. I will turn it back over to my colleague. Oh, did you have a question?
I did have one question. So the Youth Advisory Council, excuse me, and the Youth Advisory Board, where did those recommendations go? So you mentioned that these two young people, I mean, these two groups of young people are talking with educators, they're talking with those in the Health Department. Where, where do those recommendations go after?
So I'll give a great example. We had the, when we started the third cohort of the You Choose Program, which is an evidence-based program funded by federal dollars, the Office of Population Affairs, we had members from the Youth Advisory Council review some of the curriculum that we had that would be used in health education classes and physical education classes. Those young people looked through the document, they kind of say, this looks good, and I think it makes sense. So when teachers have professional development, like Friday is a professional development day, sometimes they get the feedback from the young people on, you know, this section looks really good, or like you might want to ask the question this way. When we talk about reproductive health and decision-making also, it goes beyond just reproductive health. We're talking about decision-making of what friends to interact with, how do you engage with people, behavior, you know, that's a lifetime skill that they're helping to build in the classroom, right? The teachers are, through the help of the evidence-based curriculums. And so it is shared with those teachers and shared with folks at the district level. And so it is translated, this is what young people feel, this is what they think, and they also get feedback from teachers as well.
Wonderful. And about how many schools would you say this curriculum is already integrated? And you mentioned at the district level, but-
We are in a lot of high schools across Baltimore City. Yes.
Have you ever thought about expanding to elementary and middle schools?
We absolutely have. We were following the recommendation of city schools where they came to the middle school curriculum to see what they felt comfortable introducing to the younger group because they're younger, young people. And we also want to be mindful of the thoughts of the parents or parenting people who work with those middle school and elementary school youth.
Yes, thank you.
And I will pass it on to my colleague, Ms. Daphne.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ashley. So in our, in our bureau, we have several programs that provide valuable services to our residents. Again, most people know about the WIC program, our Women, Infants and Children. We serve individuals who are pregnant, postpartum, children zero to five, and providing healthy foods, nutrition, education to our parents. And then within Baltimore City, we actually have five WIC clinics. And then there's a John Hopkins WIC as well. So we do collaborate with John Hopkins quite a bit, too. And we didn't, we had it on another slide, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention our Baltimore Infant and Toddlers program. Our Baltimore Infant and Toddlers program serves children at a zero to three with a suspected delay. And we're very proud of the work that that program is doing as well. So I just definitely wanted to mention that. And then there's a lot of provider outreach, as I mentioned earlier. From our mortality, I'm sorry, maternity, mortality review, what was revealed was that there was a lack of trust, and I'm sorry, the next slide, I'm Julie, sorry. There's a lack of trust and providers and serious barriers to quality and respectful maternal care. And I think we spoke to that earlier. And as a result, the BHB has developed a strategy to share resident stories. We also disseminate data trends by race and ethnicity, thanks to our wonderful epidemiologists. And we identify provider concerns. When we work with our providers, we share messaging and do a lot of health education. And then in coordination with the Maryland State Department of Health, BHB works with hospitals, clinic providers, and OBGYN, pediatricians, and social workers to promote training, improve referrals, and also to support city-specific areas such as what was spoken about earlier hypertension, infant safe sleep, and much, much more. Next slide. So within our initiative, we have three communities that we do a substantial amount of work in. And those communities that have had much success in Baltimore City include Upton Druid Heights, Patterson Park. And we have recently developed a strong relationship with Cherry Hill. So we're doing a lot of work down in Cherry Hill and looking forward to some wonderful things happening there. And I think that is the end of my presentation. Oh, one more slide, okay. So within our BHB communities, we offer intensive outreach, group-based programs. You can see exercise programs, hypertension prevention and management. And we work at the local neighborhood level, which allows BHB to tailor support to specific needs identified by the community members. So we do a lot of collaboration with community members, community residents, and making sure that we take the input from the community and engage it within our initiative.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You know, I just want to elevate the great work that you all are doing and just congratulate you on the work that you're doing. One of the major issues that I'm still trying to reconcile in my brain is that the data presented in the beginning of the slide is still very concerning. It's extremely concerning with all the work that you all are doing. And I'm asking you all as experts, we as legislators, we kind of take direction from you all, what else can be done or what else is needed for you all to do the work that you're doing, continue to do the work that you're doing and truly reduce those data that we're seeing, that we saw in the earlier presentation? Because in my brain, it's still not matching, still not matching.
Yeah. And we are doing, and I will, I'm going to tell my age here, but I've been with the city for almost 40 years. And most of my work has been in the Baltimore City Health Department. And most of that work has been in the Bureau of Maternal and Child Health. And I will say that I'm, I'm very proud to see the things that we've done. I mean, when I first came to maternal and child health, Baltimore City was number one in teen pregnancy. And we are now at like 16, 17, 18. So it's been a lot of work over the years. I mean, now, safe sleep deaths have, have gone down substantially, the work that we're doing. And many, you know, of our residents can speak to the, the help that they get, our Nurse Family Partnership Program. Our nurses are wonderful in terms of going out to the houses and working with our parents and even helping them to advocate. Because a lot of times, our new moms, they just don't know. And our nurses go out, I mean, we've had nurses to go to the doctors with our clients because the doctors are telling them one thing and the nurse is saying, well, no, it should be this, or you should ask questions. And so I just think that, I mean, if anybody else wants to chime in, but the work that we're doing, continuing to work with our healthcare providers, which we're really trying to step up, our care providers, MCOs, and just having all of the wonderful partners that we work with and people that are within our community.
And more specifically, you know, I'm, I'm looking at from a budgetary perspective, I'm looking at from an advocacy perspective. And just to underscore the great work that you all are doing, I, I'm not discounting that. But the data, those data that you presented clearly demonstrates that there is more needed in this space. So, Julia?
Sure, yeah, I'm happy to speak to that. So a couple things. We recently had the opportunity to present at the council luncheon, and you might remember there that we shared that we have a refreshed maternal and child health strategy that we're actually going to be releasing in fiscal year 26. So that's right around the corner. We, you know, periodically, as you can tell, we're a very strategic bureau and part of a very strategic initiative. And we periodically revise the strategy as needed. So I would say when that gets released, I think there might be opportunities for you all to support that strategic work and those recommendations that we're going to be laying out there.
Thank you. And this, this upcoming budget, what's the budget allocation for this particular bureau?
So total funds is about 28 million.
For the entire bureau?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
For the entire bureau.
And how much of that is city funds versus federal level funds?
Very little. It's about 2.8, I believe.
2.8 million out of the 28 million?
We may need to get back, we may need to look and get back to you on it.
Okay. Tell her if I can get that as an official committee request. Thank you.
I think it's about 2.8.
I will say, for me, I've been with the agency now for nine years. And I definitely will say that when we started, when I started in 2016, we were in our first cohort of the You Choose Program. And I think what has worked for us in the adolescent and reproductive health piece of the BHB family is that we have had to do some reframing and rethinking of how to stay relevant. And that is what has kept us significant. That is what has kept us going, in my opinion. And going through different federal administrations, that's how we've been able to stay strong. We've been able to expand some of the things that we've done in order to stay significant within Baltimore City. And then because this is Baltimore City, a lot of times it's built on relationships, right? And trust. And so that has also worked in our favor with providing support to people across Baltimore City and our partnerships as well. Some of the people who support us, they're behind us today, right? And some of them couldn't make it. But that has been a big help with keeping our program and moving forward as a whole, the connections that we have with people in the community, the fact that we have partnerships and advocacy that is very intentional and very strong. And then also, I'll give an example, about two summers ago, the mayor had his annual back-to-school event, and we always participate. I always make sure my team is out there, or I say, my girls, they're always out there. And Alexia Crawley, who worked for the mayor's office, I'm going to chop it up, but Youth Children, Family Success, she was there. And she asked if we had menstruation products.
Yes.
And we did not. And I said, we have to pivot and we have to start making that purchase because that is a concern for a lot of people in a lot of households, for people who are new mothers or people who have just had children. I'll say that, I'll make a general statement. And our young people as well, you buying back-to-school supplies or you buying menstruation supplies? What is more important? And so we added that into our repertoire of services that we provide at the adolescent and reproductive health clinics. And so we had those materials on hand and available and have continued to do so since that time. So it's the little things like that that we do. And we gave them to single fathers, people who were non-binary, non-gender conformant, anybody who needed it, we asked no questions. I think the nonjudgmental piece is what, is what makes us different, different, I'm sorry, and the connection. If I'm from Baltimore, born and raised, and if someone comes up to me from Baltimore, it's the relationship, it's the, how you doing? How you? We can connect. So I think that really has helped us at the Baltimore City Health Department. When we get calls, we have that connection and we click with each other. So I would say that is what has kept us, and I think that is what will continue to keep us moving, even with the ebbs and flows of federal dollars and any support that the city of Baltimore can give to us, we greatly appreciate it.
And you bring up, you bring up a wonderful point about menstrual products. I know Councilman Paris Gray has a bill right now to expand the use of menstrual products. And so we are definitely in lockstep with that as well. And I think you underscore a very important, a very important caveat that it is non-binary and men that can receive some of those products as well to support their, their partners not only before, during, and after pregnancy, and then connecting with our young people as well. Menstrual products are very expensive. They are extremely expensive. And to, you know, have young women utilizing unhygienic ways to support their menstruation is absolutely horrific. And so definitely in lockstep with you from this committee's perspective on that. Colleen, did you have any other questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I appreciate you bringing this forward. I, I know as, as a man, my insight is limited, but certainly as a father, I've gotten to see some of the challenges in the healthcare system. And, and a father of two, I've got to see it twice. You know, as we were talking through all this, there's a book that came to mind and I was feverishly searching for it that goes into depth on Black maternal health and just Black women generally and their health that I really appreciated. It gave me a lot of perspective. It's called Under the Skin by Linda Villarosa. Have you guys heard of that at all? I highly recommend you read it because I think it gave me a lot of perspective about some of the things we're discussing right now. One of the most important parts of that is even when you control for wealth, even when you control for other family and educational considerations, Black women still die at a higher rate. Black babies are not as healthy at a higher rate. It's no matter what. And interestingly, they talk about in the book that this is a uniquely American phenomenon across all cities in America. And that in instances where Black women have moved to other countries, they don't see that as much, even Europe. So it was just really, really fascinating to me. And it begged for me the question of what about the stressors in American society, the influences on American society have disproportionately affected Black women? And how can we begin to address those issues? They talk about a couple of things in the book. They talk about structural racism, design of communities, design of families, pollution, access to fresh food, access to exercise, and all these things that disproportionately Black women don't have the access to, that white men may have the access to and, and better numbers. Even when Black women do, still they die in higher numbers. But that said, this is still important. The other consideration was the bias in healthcare. And you guys talked about some of that with the, you described in one of your slides, the lack of trust in providers. I've experienced that with my wife. My wife is a physician. She knows this stuff like the back of her hand. Nonetheless, there were issues along the way, instances where people did not value her perspective because of her race, despite being an Ivy League educated doctor. And so I think that that's something that we always need to be aware of. And I think, you know, I appreciate you bringing up the concept of doulas and making sure that we have sufficient doulas across the city to meet the demands because doulas, of course, advocate for women in these instances in which they don't necessarily know what their rights are and how to think about the different options along, throughout the president's pregnancy. So I, you know, as I was thinking through all those pieces, you know, I, I want to make sure that we are thinking about what we can do and what we can't control. This is a big, big issue, I think bigger than Baltimore City, but I would say we feel it in a unique way because of some of the unique stressors here in Baltimore. You know, some of the neighborhood stressors and so on and so forth that do have a bearing on the pregnancy process. I want to be thoughtful about what we can do. We talked about some of the pre-pregnancy programs, certainly instances where women are looking to conceive. We can target those women. I think there's a huge opportunity there. We can continue to lean into those programs and support women who know they want to get pregnant. But there are plenty of women that don't know they want to get pregnant and end up doing it and figuring it out from their fourth. And making sure that we can support those women is, of course, just as, just as important, if not more important, because there may be a bigger gap to overcome because they have not necessarily done the research in the moment to figure out what, what needs to happen. So, yeah, I, I really appreciate you bringing up this topic. I, you know, once again, as, as a man in this space, I, there's so much I don't know and don't understand. But as a father in this space, I can tell you, having been through it twice, it gives me my own degree of anxiety. You know, second time my wife got pregnant, it's scary in its own way. It's, it's a beautiful miracle, but it's also super, super, super traumatizing. Funny story, I fainted the second time. We'll talk about it later. But, yeah, it just, you know, this is super important. I appreciate you bringing it up.
Thank you so much. How tall are you?
Six-four.
Six-four, wow. Tall, tall, tall tree falling. No, but, but I, you know, just to elevate, you know, and I appreciate you, Councilman, because one of the things that, you know, as I lead this committee, child health, maternal health, but also paternal health is important to the pregnancy as well. And we are, you know, research and data are just now scratching the surface with how paternal health actually influences the pregnancy as well. So the, the physical nature of, of, of the partner, the mental nature of the partner really- So the, the physical nature of, of, of the partner, the mental nature of the partner really, really influences how, and quite honestly, that some of the health outcomes that exist within pregnancy and how it trans, how it, you know, just transcribes. And so, um, it, it's definitely a, a mood and a move momentum that's happening across the nation where within this maternal health space, we are integrating areas like menstrual products. We're, uh, integrating paternal health, we're integrating, um, environmental justice factor. So you, you know, you're in the right space and, and we value your, your expertise in that respect because even, you know, even men have an opportunity to learn about these initiatives, learn about how to take care of your partner. But also, like you were saying, in that advocacy space, saying, no, my, my partner needs this. We need this for our families. We need this for our community. So I thank you again. Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a similar lens from Councilman Conway, but also a person who sat at the school district and.
You fainted too? Sorry, I'm playing.
You know, you know, the crazy part is, um, as a father of two as well, um, my wife is a nurse practitioner. So understanding the healthcare, we purposely went to a black OB-GYN. We purposely had the same doula both times. We purposely had a code word from when we needed a doctor to exit the room so we can make a decision for our family. So I get the nervousness even with a black woman being the person that's helping us with this experience to birth our child, but also having another black woman there to help us calmly make a decision. But I think about the, just the healthcare landscape itself. If we're talking about outcomes, we're talking about young people because of our environmental factors who have having children earlier. There are only maybe three hospitals that can actually support them in this area, that can actually make sure and have the positive outcomes that a premature baby can exist further into their lifespan. There are fewer people who have the lens where they can work to not only lower the barriers, because even in those hospitals, they still have social workers who are still learning to be socially competent and working with a mother who is leaving a hospital but having to come back and that child be there. And how to support her to, can one, be a person again, because, and I say this as someone who loves my wife, but understands that childbirth means that more than likely you will not be yourself until three years later. Because you are mentally, emotionally, and physically trying to realize who you are again each time you give birth. So to have that, I think as a spectrum, we have to think deeper as a, as a country, but also as a city. I'm worried about this space because the eight hundred million dollars in cuts that are being voted on right now in Congress mean a lot because it affects thirteen million families right now. To the point where I just saw the numbers from CBO this morning that says that it would mean that even my private healthcare will increase because the persons who no longer have access to Medicare and Medicaid will then be unable to afford the actual care, which means hospitals will shift that burden onto us to pay for the care. This is a space where we have to really think about it. Um, I'm proud that Maryland made the right choice of making sure that doulas are available through Medicaid. But I think that we need to do as a city, an outreach campaign because a lot of families that qualify for it don't use it. And that's a hard space. Um, and I'm thankful for our hospital partners, Madam Chair. Um, I think about Sinai, who does have doulas actually come to the center with women. If I can get our other healthcare partners on board about it, because I think that that will at least help us in the clinical setting with having that approach. But also a space where Bloom and others have done so well with educating people in their home about the small things they can do to take care of themselves, especially. I saw an alarming number about how we have preclampsia and eclampsia in Baltimore City. And having a doula there, because you're not always going to get through to your doctor all the time and then you're going to get the person as on call. When you can call a doula and she can send you the research and actually bring your Doppler or bring you a med, uh, an actual, um, blood pressure cup. I think one of the things that I was going to lead to is that some of the things I think we can do immediately is looking at in ourselves how we can bridge that gap. I was interested in, I know the people about the baby fund who wanted to do the, the childbirth thing. I think we need to get the childbirth first. I think that we should invest in the essentials for mainly two things. One is how do we make sure we have a fund for people to access prenatal vitamins or access for transportation to those appointments? Those are the bare minimum things that we can do to get people there because the goal is to get you to healthcare so that you can have a healthy birth. So I look forward to the conversation, Madam Chair.
No, and, and, and thank you so much. I, I just want to thank you for, for your personal testimony. And you, you've hit the nail right on the head with the way that I'm thinking, um, about how we can develop this, this particular legislative agenda. We understand that our nation is in a very, very difficult time right now where millions of dollars are being taken away from local city health departments and state health departments. And it is my goal to make sure that we not only just rely on the, the soft funding of these programs, these, these types of legislative initiatives and our role needs to be codified. And so you'll, you'll all see as we progress through these, these hearings, you'll see a series of bills that come from this committee that we are codifying the support of exactly what you all just named, um, today. So making sure that we have community-based dual and midwifery support, making sure that we have, um, that maternal health services integration relying on, um, not behavioral health systems, Baltimore heavens, Be More, Be More for Healthy Babies. Making sure that we have that perinatal provider bias training, um, and also making sure that it's a requirement, um, within our hospital systems. Making sure that we are using our leverage and our influence to ensure that that happens. Making sure that the data related to maternal and child health has, is transparent and accountable. Making sure that it's flowing through its respective agencies and not being hemmed up with interoperability agreements. Making sure that we're working with the administration to ensure that we support, um, mothers and fathers through a, a culturally competent social determinants, um, of health assistance lens. These are the things that we can do within our purview as legislators to push this initiative forward, but to make sure that we are guarding against what is happening at the federal level and making sure that our city, our residents within our city, and also quite frankly, um, other cities that look to Baltimore as being a leader, they can follow suit as well. We have an incredible amount of power here in the localities at the state level to make sure that these things are implemented and executed in the right way, but also that they are protected in a way that cannot be, um, deferred and/or, um, just simply demolished and diminished, uh, by the federal legis, by the federal government. So, thank you so much. Any other questions or comments before we move forward to civil rights?
Just one comment. I wanted to speak about the importance of protecting the data as well.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and the importance of that, the way that we use data, Be More for Healthy Babies, we, we are data driven, right? And so that, that doesn't only include the quantitative piece, but also the qualitative piece and lived experience. But I want to, I want to speak to just the quantitative data itself. And we know that, um, we, there have been some, um, kind of situations where data has gone missing. Um, and this is data that is important to Be More for Healthy Babies, to help us monitor our successes, to help us understand truly what is the racial inequity that we are looking at? How, how can we close racial inequity if we can't see what it is, right? So I just wanted to also say, like, in addition to protecting the funding, um, and our, uh, community, our residents, also the data that is going to inform the way that we work.
You're exactly right. Thank you so much. All right, now we're going to turn it over to, uh, civil rights, Office of Civil Rights. And hello, former Councilman Burnett, we see you as well. Hello, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Zachary Wellman, I'm the Equity Policy Analyst for the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. It's hard to follow up that, uh, amazing presentation from the Health Department, but I think I would like to take this time just to highlight some of the work, um, that the office is doing and also some of the services that the office is providing, um, for black mothers, black birthing persons, and families. I'm trying to share my screen now. Sorry, technical difficulties. Thank you. Let me start with the, the, straight to the next slide. So just to start out, uh, in case those, uh, people are unfamiliar in the audience and to freshen up the council, the Office of Equity and Civil Rights is a city agency, uh, devoted to advancing equity, um, upholding civil rights, upholding local living and prevailing wage laws, um, ensuring access, um, access, accommodation, and equal opportunities for people living with disabilities, uh, and providing oversight to local law enforcement. Our mission and, uh, what we strive to achieve is to eliminate inequity, inequality, and discrimination, um, in the city. Some of the divisions that we house are the Equity Division, uh, the Police Accountability Division, which encompasses the Police Accountability Board and the Administrative Chartering Committee, the Community Relations Commission, which handles, uh, cases of discrimination, um, the Mayor's Commission on Disabilities, the Wage Commission, the Women's Commission, and the Veterans Commission. Next slide, please. So I would like to start with the Equity Division, which is the division that, uh, I'm housed under as the policy analyst for the office. The Equity Office was formed, uh, in the wake of, um, the Honorable Members of the City Council passing Equity Ordinance in September of twenty eighteen. This, the purpose of, uh, the Equity Office is to ensure that city policies, programs, and its budget are fair and it meets the needs of Baltimore City residents. We support and champion practices that, uh, that highlight and also respect the different lived experiences and backgrounds of every, um, Baltimore resident, um, on the base of protected classes such as, uh, gender identity, race, ethnicity, culture, um, ability, um, and so on. Some of what the Equity Division does, um, is use comprehensive data tracking, um, to monitor outcomes and effectiveness of policies, practices, and investments in the city. We review legislation, uh, at the city level and the state level, occasionally federally. We conduct trainings throughout city agencies, um, to advance equity within city government operations. And we are also responsible for conducting the Equity Assessment, um, which is a yearly assessment that, uh, that reviews essentially the, the outcomes of equity within the city government. One of the important, uh, protected classes that we consider when, um, reviewing equity, um, in city operations and also in legislation is, uh, gender identity. And that is very heavily also informed by the lived experience of, uh, black mothers and black birthing persons. And this is a big consideration, uh, for example, when advocating for legislation to pass, um, two pieces of legislation, uh, we would like to highlight, um, is that at the state, the General Assembly, we advocated for the passage of Senate Bill six seventy-four, uh, which established the Maryland Collaborative to advance implementation of coverage of overcount of birth control. Mouthful, I'm sorry, but, uh, this is essentially a, uh, a collaborative to try to identify ways in which access to overcount of birth control can be, um, improved throughout the state. And additionally, uh, we advocate for the passage of, um, uh, HB nine thirty, which is the Public Health Abortion Grant Program, um, which improves access to abortion care and clinical services throughout the state. These two pieces of legislation are specifically important, um, as it relates to, um, black maternal health because it, access to preventative, like, uh, preventative reproductive care, um, and contraceptive care is important to improving maternal health, health outcomes, um, preventing unattended pregnancies, uh, which can have, um, serious concern, uh, serious impacts on, uh, black mothers, especially, uh, financially and also mentally, um, addressing health disparities and easing the pressure of, uh, the pressure on the healthcare system. Next slide, please. One of the reasons why, uh, black maternal health is very important for the Equity Division, for the off, office as a whole, is due to the fact that in Maryland, black women are approximately three point seven times more likely to die from pregnancy-related causes than white women. I know the, a few other presentations touched on this, but, um, this disparity persists within Baltimore City, um, where the majority of maternal deaths occur amongst black women. Another main issue for, uh, black mothers and black birthing persons in, uh, Baltimore City is severe maternal morbidity, which nearly doubles the rate of, uh, their white counterparts. And this is often due to underlying health inequities, um, within the healthcare system, uh, barriers to timely care, and, um, just overall disparities, uh, when it, in regards to access to, um, prenatal care and also maternal care in general. And then finally, uh, sixty-five, well, not finally, but sixty-five percent of, uh, black pregnant individuals in Baltimore City star prenatal care as compared to eighty percent of their white counterparts, uh, which reflects, again, these ongoing disparities, um, and the lack of trust and access to, um, maternal healthcare within the healthcare system. Next slide, please. Continuing from that, uh, the, uh, preterm birth rate, which is, uh, like, um, explains, uh, preterm, uh, births, um, for black mothers in Baltimore City is fourteen point one percent, which is significantly higher than the city, I mean, the citywide and the national average, um, which exemplifies an issue with prenatal care for, um, black women specifically. And the, uh, and neighborhoods within East and West Baltimore, um, with the highest concentration of black residents consistently report the lowest maternal health outcomes, um, which correlates to limited access to OB-GYN providers, poverty, hospital closures, and lack of access to, um, medicine and healthcare in general. Next slide, please. So the, uh, Baltimore City Women's Commission, um, is established to, uh, uh, provide and, uh, try to achieve a high quality of life, equal rights, opportunities, and access to services for all women, women identifying, non-binary, and/or assigned female of birth individuals. A lot of the work that they do is also, um, to advocate for, um, maternal health and family well-being. The commission develops information systems, provides advice and counsel, conducts research, hosts educational programming, analyzes policy and advocates for women's issues, uh, to improve the lives and opportunity of all women, women identifying, non-binary, and a, and/or assigned female of birth individuals in Baltimore. The, the Women's Commission, uh, is a, a resource for the Baltimore City community. It's very important, uh, that we get the word out that what the Women's Commission is, if nothing else, is a, is, is a resource for Baltimore City residents, um, those who need information, who need help. It is a safe space for, um, women throughout the city as well as, uh, uh, families. And their, uh, meetings are held, uh, open so anybody can attend and listen in and, and voice any of their concerns on the last Wednesday of every month at six P M. Uh, one of the things I would like to, uh, point out is a few of the events that the Women's Commission holds. They held them, they hold them pretty frequently, uh, usually about one every month, um, every other month, if not, um. Recently, we had in December of twenty twenty-four, a Community Resource Fair. In February of twenty twenty-five, we had a, uh, Supporting Family Caregivers, um, luncheon event. And then in the, at the end of March twenty twenty-five, we held an annual Women's History Month Luncheon Event as well. A lot of these, not only are they to, uh, for example, in the luncheons, honor women, um, in various fields such as education or advocacy, but they're also are a good place to access different resources and pamphlets in which we see our tables and the Women's Commission themselves provides a lot of information as well. Next slide, please. Uh, next, the Community Relations Commission, um, as I mentioned, is the commission within the Office of Equity and Civil Rights that, uh, handles complaints of discrimination, um, throughout the city. The CRC, um, as we call it, is, uh, designated to enforce Article Four of the Baltimore City Code. This prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, religion, national origin, ancestry, uh, age, sex, color, physical or mental disability, sexual orientation, and/or gender identity or expression. The CRC also enforces the Baltimore City Lactation Accommodation Policy, which requires, uh, that, um, lactating individuals be provided with a safe and reasonable space and time in order to, um, if they need to lactate. And this is an important accommodation, um, provided to, uh, black mothers and black birthing persons because, um, obviously, like, when you, when you, after giving birth to a child, you need some time away from work in order to, to tend to, um, some of those family needs. some time away from work in order to tend to some of those family needs. The CRC investigates this and, not compliance with this, as an instance of discrimination. They receive these discrimination complaints and they have the authority to subpoena information, witnesses, hold public hearings. And when conciliation attempts fail, issue cease and desist orders and resolve cases into court. The Commission holds its meetings on the third Wednesday of each month via Teams and those are open for attendance as well to listen in. Next slide, please. If anybody feels as though they have been discriminated against, they're able to submit complaints to the CRC online at the OECR's website. They can submit them in person at the OECR's office or by mail by filling out the complaint intake form found online, in which you can print out and mail in to the office. Some of the rights that complainants have is to file complaint with the Commission, to know their rights as defined by Article Four of the Baltimore City Code, to be free from harassment or penalties of any kind as a result of filing a complaint, and to have their case decided in a fair and impartial manner. And complainants have the responsibility to give a factual account of instances that led to the decision to file complaint, swearing or affirming that the information presented is true and honoring any and all agreements determined by the Commission as appropriate. On the other hand, respondents have the right to know the particulars of the complaint being brought to them, know the step-by-step process that the Community Relations Commission employs in resolving complaints, submit its defense of complaint allegations, provide witnesses to support their position, same as complainants, be represented by Leo Counsel and voluntarily settle at any point during the proceedings. And they have the responsibility to provide any information, including written statement records and anything else deemed necessary by the CRC, not penalize in any way people for submitting complaints or witnesses for their participation in the Commission's process and to honor all final agreements reached by the CRC. Next up, next slide, please. Just to, at a very high top level, go over some of the discrimination complaint process because it is a very long process and it's important to be patient and to kind of understand where things are because there can be times where it seems like there isn't any movement on those investigations, but the Commission is steadily working on any and all complaints that are submitted. First, you may submit the complaint. After that, a fact-finding conference will be held and this is an attempt to, like, preliminary resolve the complaint as quickly as possible. Next, the, the complaint goes into an extended investigation in which the OECR houses multiple investigators. Then there is an attempt at conciliation, at which point if conciliation cannot be made, there will be a public hearing on the instance of discrimination. Some important points is that, again, a quality investigation takes time, so it's important to, to just be patient so that the case can be prepared as carefully as possible so it can stand up in court if necessary. You are protected in your right to file complaint. It's unlawful for anyone to harass, intimidate or penalize you in any manner or take any action against you because you filed a complaint. And if you find yourself a target of harassment, call your investigator immediately and let them know. Details are important, so try to keep as many details as possible and report them to your investigator. It's very important not to try to decide for yourself what is important in the instance of being discriminated against. You can leave that to the investigator and just tell them anything. And then try to keep the CRC and your investigator aware of any changes in your address so we can reach you at all times. And also, it's important to remember that you will be required to swear or affirm that information provided is true. And that's pretty standard. Next slide, please. Just to cover some frequently asked questions about discrimination, it is the difference in treatment of any individual person because of race, color, religion, national origin, ancestry, sex, age, marital status, physical or mental disability, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression. And it is illegal to discriminate on, on the basis of any of these. And this would cover individuals who are being discriminated against in, in the way of not giving proper accommodation for lactation and women who are, who, who are mothers, people who are parents and on the basis of them being that as well. If you feel as though, or think you've been discriminated against, you should always inform the person, if it's an employer or business owner, you can tell them about the law, try to, like, find a fix, the solution. If that doesn't work, then you should go to the Community Relations Commission to file a complaint. Also make sure that you document everything. You write down conversations, save every piece of paper that you receive in relation to the discrimination. And if there's any witnesses, ask them to give you a written statement. And it's really important to remember that filing complaint will not make things worse. You are legally protected under law to file a complaint and against any retaliation. So if you feel as though you've been discriminated against or improperly treated, you can rest assured that if you submit that complaint, a resolution will be reached and you will not, you know, find any, like, retaliation or be, like, in a worse opposition because of that. Next slide, please. Just some important resources. This is the pamphlet, this is the pamphlet that the Women's Commission provides. These are, I note, very many resources that, that the Women's Commission provides for residents of Baltimore City and outlines some of local protections and definitions as it relates to women. And then, next slide. And if you have any need to contact the OECR about anything mentioned here, you can reach out to me, the policy analyst for the office. For all of the concerns, you can reach out to Deputy Chief Equity Officer Burnett. And for general matters, or if you want to reach out and you're not sure who to call about anything mentioned here, discrimination, even if it relates to, you know, a police complaint, anything like that, and you're not sure who to call, you can always call just the general OECR number or send the general OECR email message. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And, and just for the public's knowledge, the reason why I asked the Office of Civil Rights to be here today and present is because of the discrimination that happens often with pregnant women as it relates to employment, housing. And so, even though there, there are, you know, a number of people that support, that support pregnant mothers, there are instances of discrimination that happen. And so, this was an opportunity to showcase the rights of these partners and, and not just women, but also women identi, I mean, people that identify as women or even males as well with regard to, like, paternity leave, different things that they have a legal right to in this nation. So thank you so much for, for, for sharing. I did have one question related to lactation rooms within the city of Baltimore. Do we have any lactation rooms within City Hall? We do?
Yeah, I believe it's downstairs, right? Yeah.
I'm sorry?
It is the, oh, it is what used to be the old City Hall. Remind me, Ms. Marguerite, I think we used to have a cafe. It's the old cafe.
Okay. So we do, okay, so we do have a confirm, is that within every city building or just?
I can reach out to DGS and follow up.
Okay, thank you so much. I want to make sure that we have some sort of reasonable accommodations for, for lactating mothers as well and make sure that it's comfortable.
And so, Marguerite, you'll send that one over to as part of the list of requests? Okay.
If my memory serves me right, DGS as well as the city agencies have to indicate in an Excel sheet which room, the actual room number, the actual location is, so that if Silver Rights would like to stop by and see it is there. I remember this from city schools because we had to do it for all 150 campuses.
Okay, wonderful, thank you for that. And that's just kind of following up on the bill of former Councilwoman Shannon Snead. That was something that she was very, very passionate about. And so just want to make sure that we are continuing to elevate the good work of former colleagues as well. Colleagues, did you have any questions for Silver Rights? Now we'll move into public testimony. Marguerite will let you know, you are here. If we have anyone for public testimony, we want to start with Lydia Harris. And if you can press the button on the side, there we are.
Thank you all so much for having me today. My name is Lydia Harris. I am a full-spectrum doula here in Baltimore City. My background in the Black maternal and child health field includes my current full-time role as the Lead of Content Marketing Strategy at a digital startup that connects Black mothers who have Medicaid with Black doulas across the nation. Including right here in Baltimore called May. It is through May that I'm able to continue supporting births by utilizing their services in my own doula practice. I currently volunteer with Mom and Nda Birth Circle, a volunteer group that provides childbirth education, prenatal yoga, sound healing and doula support at no cost to mothers in Baltimore City who otherwise could not afford it. My previous roles include working as a doula trainer and mentor with Dr. Kanika Harris on the Nurish Full Spectrum Doula Training Program that you heard about previously or earlier today, and as a perinatal care coordinator at a nonprofit clinic in Southeast DC called Community of Hope. Most notably, my role as the founder and CEO of my doula business, Labor with Love, is where my passion grew and my career in maternal and child health began. It's what brought me here today. I'm here today to support City Councilwoman Felicia Porter's Black Maternal Health Agenda. The need for an actionable movement toward change cannot be overstated. The statistics are there, the mothers' names are not forgotten, and the legacy of trauma will remain with us for years to come. What's good for Black women is good for all women, and prioritizing our focus on Black mothers is the key to better outcomes across the board. You have the opportunity to set a precedent for what community-led change looks like when resources are poured into those on the ground doing the work. I fully endorse this agenda, especially at such a tumultuous time as now, when racial disparities that continue to persist are now being ignored and erased from history. City Councilwoman Porter embodied the principles of Black community-based birth work. When I extended gratitude to her on social media for her work, she immediately reached out to me and involved me in her process. I so appreciate her willingness to listen to the community and work with us to create a solution. Her agenda ignites hope in me that the efforts of every birth worker in Baltimore City that has committed their lives to better birth is not in vain. I appreciate you all taking the time to listen and it is my sincerest hope that I see this Black maternal health agenda come to fruition under the advisement and leadership of City Councilwoman Felicia Porter. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We also have Anna Rodney. And I just hit you up yesterday and you're here. Yes, amen, amen.
I'm not here. So I had a very eloquent statement prepared, but being in the room with so many colleagues and so many champions, I'm going to just share some of the notes that came up if that's okay, and you'll just have to take for granted that I am eloquent in other places. That was a joke. So, first of all, I just want to again introduce myself. My name is Anna Rodney. I am the founder of Mom Cares, which was an organization that served for over seven years, serving the Black population of Baltimore City through providing NICU care, postpartum care and birth, birth care for Black families who are navigating a high-risk pregnancy and/or a NICU involvement after birth. We closed our doors because we had, we saw the work was being done and carried on by so many other people and we actually met our mission late last year. And so I am here also as a representative of the Doula Alliance of Maryland, as their Director of Public Policy and Advocacy, which is the work that I'm finding myself doing now. I'm also going to shout out the Women's Commission and the, the, the Women's Commission, I am also a Commissioner there, and also the Chair of the Maternal Mortality Review Board. I have been a doula for the last fourteen, seventeen years, excuse me, serving the community. And so first of all, I want to mention that the Doula Alliance of Maryland, our job is to make sure that we are supporting doulas in Maryland with a focus on Baltimore currently to engage in the Medicaid system. We've gotten, we have done multiple outreach to doulas throughout Maryland around why the system is not working for them, and we have feedback and a white paper that is in process that can support the things that doulas are, the barriers for doulas to get Medicaid reimbursable to support the families. Also to Councilwoman Torrance's point, also understanding why doula, why people in the community are not accessing doulas through the benefit. Mentioning, I wanted to mention and champion because I work with the Health Department so closely, the BHB neighborhoods that have the, the, the programs in set, you'll see that those statistics are much higher than the, the national average. So I think it just underscores your point from earlier that BHB is doing proven wonderful work and you can see it highlighted in the outcomes that you're seeing in the communities that they're there. Also, just again, shout out to Councilwoman Torrance. He supported our work, Mom Cares' work through Black Maternal Health Week last year, supporting Fatherhood Matters Initiative and coming and talking to fathers and agreeing to do that. And so fathers are needed. We cannot say that we don't know, we can't, you know, you are the front line before doulas, before medical care providers, you are the one that loves and witnesses and supports. And so it is very important for us to make sure that we're making space for fathers in the, in the maternal health space. Again, DAM, Doula, the Doula Alliance of Maryland, or affectionately we call them DAM, is working to collect data. We would love to be able to provide support to the council for that. And then also making sure that we are supporting our doulas through professional development, training and support with Medicaid uptake. And then again, I am just very proud to be here. I'm very grateful for Councilwoman Porter's zeal and excitement around maternal health matters and just being a champion for those in Baltimore City. And I do look forward to working with, working with you all moving forward through the different avenues that I am supporting here. Thank you very much.
And, and thank you so much for your work. And just a short story for, for colleagues, I sent her a DM yesterday, like, five o'clock, and you are here this morning at 10:00 AM. And so I just want to thank, and I actually responded to a story. Yeah, and so thank you so much for, for your work and your willingness to, to highlight the work. We, we definitely see you and we just want to continue to work with you all. It is very important what you're doing and I see the revolutionary work that many of the organizations that you all are connected with, you're doing the work every single day. And so I know, you know, I'm speaking on behalf of my colleagues, but we, we partner and we gladly partner with you on this work. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say I enjoyed the conversation last year because when we think about maternal health, we never think about the role of the father or the partner, but also the fact that support is comprehensive and 360. I always think about the meme of when a woman or a birthing person has their child and their parent comes in and immediately looks to them to support them while everyone else is looking at this beautiful baby. We haven't realized that we can do both things and we always put the eye on the baby but never know that it is ultimately, if a woman's breastfeeding, it is the emotions and hormones that she's spreading, she's giving that baby that can impact that baby's life too. If we're not taking care of her, then she doesn't build the immune system and immunity that she can transfer to that baby as well. So I think that this is, I'm happy with the work you're doing in terms of fathers because a lot of us don't know how to be fathers and a lot of women don't know how to be mothers. So it is humbling experience to say that we both don't know and thank God for Google. And I thank you for your support of both fathers and mothers and also the fact that it has led to babies being supported the right way.
Absolutely. And I will just take a moment just to geek out and say that yes, we know that mothers change hormonally throughout pregnancy and after the, the birth, but fathers also change hormonally as well. And so we need to understand that fact and understand that mothers are going through a immense amount of emotional change, but so are fathers and fathers are not getting the support. And so this is something that has just come up even within our own organization in the last couple of years and I'm very excited to be able to continue to support that work as well.
Thank you so much. And last but certainly not least, Olivia Bowens?
She had to step out.
Oh, okay.
And the MCA.
Okay.
She was hoping to make it back in time. I don't know of anyone else.
Okay, I think we have one more. Okay, I think we have one more person. And if she gets back by the time we finish, we can definitely refer back to her. Thank you. And last but certainly not least, Ashley Johnson?
Good morning. Thank you so much for holding this session. I am, I've been in birth work for about 10 years and I currently am the founder of Black Birth Central. And so I'm glad that this is a conversation at the forefront now. I'm also a mom of three children. I had three out of hospital births and I breastfed all of those children for three-plus years. So I have a gamut of experience as well as knowledge because I've studied this stuff. One of the things that concerns me is around this conversation of Black maternal health is there's not a lot of conversations around midwifery care. And there's, the conversation always goes to, we need more doulas. But the problem is not that we don't have enough doulas. That was a community response to the lack of care that we've been given. The answer is midwifery care, right? And it covers the gamut of things that we've talked about with social determinants of health, right? Midwives come in and they become a part of your family. They learn what's going on in the household, they learn what's going on with partners and siblings, and they help to address those issues, not just the medical part of it. So I want to make sure that we don't leave that very important piece out of it. And right now, what I've witnessed working with lots of birth workers over the past decade is that many doulas are supposed to be midwives, but they come to this work because that's the, one, that's all that they know and there's a lot of barriers to becoming a midwife, right? In terms of funding, in terms of where do I start, right? The laws that are really putting a lot of pressure on folks or midwives. So I want to make sure that's a part of the conversation. And also when we are talking about OB-GYNs, making sure that we're talking to the next line, right? Because we can do a lot of bias trainings, but a lot of these things are deeply seeped in, right? Like they've been OB-GYNs for the last 20, 30 years. And so it's going to be a really hard feat to make sure that those things are addressed properly. But we also have an opportunity to address the folks that are coming up behind them, right? And making sure that this conversation is embedded in the, their studies now. So thank you so much for having this and for continuing the conversation.
And real quick, just for my education, can you explain, in the public's education, explain the difference between doulas and midwives? Help us understand that, just take about one to two minutes.
Yeah, so a midwife is a medical provider, right? They are there to help deliver a baby, right? Or to be the catcher. So they're, they're making sure that blood pressure is okay, they're doing prenatals, all those things. Doulas are emotional, physical support people, right? So they're not medical providers. They're there to help with research, to help folks make decisions, but they can't make the decisions, right? So that, that's the, the difference.
And that's such a wonderful, thank, thank you for that, you know, because I, I kind of thought that they were two sides of the same coin. I would love to see what can be added to this particular agenda surrounding the connection and collaboration between doulas and midwifery support. And so we'll definitely engage you all as a stakeholder group because you bring up a good point. If mothers want to have their babies at home, you know, there is an opportunity that we can integrate midwifery into their care as well. So thank you for that.
And there's midwives that work in hospital settings as well.
Yes, of course.
Right? And there's, and there are differences between the outcomes of OBs and midwives even in the hospital system, right? Because OBs are trained surgeons. That's their specialty. Whereas for midwives, natural birth is theirs, physiological birth is their specialty. So, yeah.
That's amazing. So we'll definitely continue the conversation. Thank you so much for testifying today. Yes, Councilman.
I want to add, I appreciate the points that you made, one about doulas and midwives, but also the note about OBs. Because in my personal experience, it wasn't just the OBs. It's the technicians, it's the people who provide all the insight and do all the analysis that then the OB can make decisions with. And sometimes those interactions are not as helpful as they need to be. And I think that's something that we need to remember. In my personal, you know, interaction through, through both pregnancies, OBs were phenomenal. They were truly incredible. But sometimes those technicians weren't the greatest. They didn't exactly listen all the way through or provide the, I don't know, the, the soft touch that my wife needed along the way. So just to keep that in mind, as you guys are advocating for women and advocating for pregnant women, just to keep that in mind as well.
That's a good point. Thank you. Yes.
And I'm sure I might suggest that we bring in our hospital partners too because I know...
Stay tuned.
Yeah, because I saw an increase in nurse midwives at Sinai and Hopkins, which is a big shift, especially since the hospital billables for a midwife is totally different than a doctor. But I think we should have that conversation.
And Councilman, you, you exactly read my mind. And so we're going to recess this hearing. This is an opportunity for us to have an...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
There was a woman who wasn't here. She said she came.
Oh, she's still not back. All right, thank you so much. Okay.
I did have a point that I wanted to raise.
Sure.
I wasn't sure about timing, so I had thoughts, but I kept them to myself in case we ran out of time.
Sure, sure. And you can have five minutes so we can kind of continue.
Thank you. I wanted to uplift Ashley's point about doulas and midwifery, and I wanted to take it a step further. In a point of your agenda, you mentioned bias training, and I think that everything you said is phenomenal, but I do think that it needs to go a step further because there is implicit bias present amongst medical providers that doesn't get talked about and it's directly against the physiological nature of birth that's embedded in their practice. And that is what needs to be addressed. Treating physiological birth like a disease from the jump is a problem in and of itself that cultural competence and racial competence isn't going to address. And so I think that's another piece that can be added into that puzzle.
Thank you. And I received that feedback. We'll make sure that when we have our first stakeholder engagement group, we'll figure out basically which particular ordinances we want to kind of execute first and then we'll be able to kind of go from there to integrate feedback. But I definitely received it and thank you for your courage and expertise to share that. Most people sit within our hearings and see that we are doing something wrong, but don't say anything. So I just commend you on your courage to truly and fully participate in the process. So thank you and I really appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. So there are no virtual testimonies, so we are going to go in recess for this particular hearing. Thank you, thank you, thank you all so much for joining us today. This is one of the first steps of the conversation. My hope is that we can have a subsequent hearing once we have our first stakeholder engagement group with, with some of these community-based organizations, our hospital partners and our governmental agency partners here in the city of Baltimore. So thank you colleagues so much for joining and being my protectors, my team members on both sides. So I do appreciate you all, do appreciate your support in this legislative initiative as well. All right, thank you all.